I'm going to call to order the March 6th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, Redevelopment Agency and Redevelopment Successor Agency and Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance, so we'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight's going to be led by James Corliss.
Of Britain.
Two to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as well.
All right, the council did meet in close session this evening to confer with our real property negotiator regarding 1725, 1731, and 1801, West Capitol Avenue, and negotiations with Mercy Housing, no action was taken, and to confer with our legal counsel regarding one item of existing litigation, People's Vanguard of Davis, with the case number noted in the agenda, and one item of exposure to litigation referencing the October 10th, 2018, letter from Scott Rathfordy. All right, with that, we're going to proceed to our general administration agenda, item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. We ask anybody wishing to address the council, unless there are any other agenda items this evening, to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available near the front door, and turn that into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everybody gets a chance to be heard equally, so we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of a clerk is a flip chart that simply indicates which agenda item the council's currently considering. The clerk accepts the yellow cards all the way up to the conclusion of the staff report on any particular item. Once the staff report's complete and the council discussion and the public testimony have begun, we don't take any additional speaking requests, so if you're here and you already know you want to speak on, you know, item 18 or any other item, please be sure to turn the card in as soon as you can, but definitely by the end of the staff report. We recognize that for some folks, speaking in public can be a nerve-wracking, horrible, awful experience that produces hives and other nervous reactions, so we do ask that there not be any boos or cat calls or even applause or other demonstrations, and we just try to maintain a civil discussion among neighbors here in the chambers. We're unable, under this first item, 1A, to take any action or have a discussion about issues that are brought up under item 1A pursuant to state law, but it is an important opportunity for a public forum. So I'm looking here, matter of fact, we have no request under item 1A, so we'll proceed directly to item 1B, which is council communications. Are there reports or there communications to this evening? Councilmember Sandin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency met on February 21st. We approved an air quality emission fee update and our comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018, and we also heard an update on the Southport Levy Improvement Project and an update on our federal lobbying effort. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your work on that. And the Port District Commission met earlier tonight, and we sworn our newest commissioner, Mike McGowan, and elected the commission's officers, Commissioner Viegas's chair, and I was elected as vice chair. And we also authorized the sale of 4,300 West Capitol Avenue to the city of West Sacramento. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Guerrero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last Wednesday, I attended the West Sacramento Police Department Community Event where the police officers were present to provide a presentation on data of events going on in the city and the services to correspond with the issues, and they responded to questions. The police officers explained how when there's a situation in the community, they target the police to address and mitigate the criminal activity. Many people were positive and enquired about the need for additional police officers. The residents expressed interest to support uniformed police officers with additional police officers. They also provided an update on the recent homeless county point in time, which is set at about 80. They mentioned that the point-in-time count in January is best, is the best time to capture folks in most need of housing, and that there are folks who live in motels on couches and in shelters, and they are not considered for the survey. When asked about unsheltered children, they commented that they would be placed in a sheltered area immediately. The police are doing an excellent job in building relationships with the unsheltered folks and even those that are sheltered that are in need of housing, and directing them to county services and the Warming Center, which I've observed to be very successful. There seems to be a growing concern about the trails that lead behind the Westmore Oak School and the number of homeless folks that do frequent the area and keeping the kids safe. The police said that they are aware of the situation, they're considering things like additional lighting and patrols. In addition to that, last Thursday, I attended the 26 Sacramento Asian Pacific Chamber of Commerce Annual Installation and Awards Dinner. They honored leaders of the region which, who have done an amazing job for the Asian Pacific Islander community. This year, they recognized Tara Araya McUnies and Puto Blanco of Paul Blanco's Good Car Company. They were, they have done a tremendous job in the community, and I want to congratulate them on their work and recognition.
Councilmember Ledesma.
It occurs to me, since I missed the last meeting, that I did not give you an update. On February 11th, I attended the Yolo County Transportation District meeting out in Woodland. We took on a number of items, notably, you may have seen in local news, we dedicated one of our buses in the memory of Officer Corona, who was the Davis officer who was killed unfortunately in the tragic shooting out there, so we're proud to have a bus running through Yolo County in Davis named after her. We also took up a few items, namely around a six-month update on the YCD actual versus budget expenses, some good robust conversations around where we are with budgets, and I know in the last meeting you also had discussions around VIA, so a lot of discussions I provided to them, input I provided to them about how we can learn from planning for budgeting items from VIA and the data we get from them as well as from us. So in addition, there's just a couple of the items on purchases of buses that are near-zero CNG engines and some other rolling stocks, so that's all I had. Thank you.
And Mayor Ron Temerosco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, as everybody knows, I have been nursing a post-surgery foot, so a lot of my ability to be out and about has been tempered. However, it's been a busy last few weeks for the mayor pro tem. I actually attended the West Sacramento Police Department Community Meeting. I found it well-attended, and I think that the, our police department did a fantastic job at informing our residents as to their efforts in community outreach and prevention. I had the great opportunity of actually participating in the pit count with Senior Lead Officer Jason Mahaffey, and went around the city essentially counting folks as they were, where they were residing. And I'm no stranger to pick counts. My husband has had about 20 years with the Sacramento Police Department, so who, he has been engaging in these efforts for a long time, but it was the very first time that I had the opportunity to see it firsthand. So even though I was hobbling around in the mud with crutches, I thought it was still an amazing experience, and I commend the officers who engage our community and volunteers in getting out there to get that, that as accurate as possible count. The night before, I actually visited our winter warming center by the invitation of Pastor Don Bosley and the Mercy Coalition. That evening, we were at Southport Church. As many of us know, our winter warming centers do rotate, and they have different hosts every night. The city of West Sacramento is in partnership with the county of Yolo, as well as other partners, including the Collings Teen Center, the Mercy Coalition, Shores of Hope, and other partners, including Rotary Clubs and other volunteers run by local churches. It was wonderful to see that volunteers were actually fighting one another in order to feed people in our community who were hungry that night, and it just so happened that it was very rainy that evening and storming, and so we had about 20 people who were able to enjoy a warm meal and a dry place to sleep, and there was a lot of community in that room. I saw three Downtown Streets Team members who were gracious and filled with gratitude have a place to sleep before they entered their shift the following morning. Speaking of DSTs, since there's a nice transition, the, I had an opportunity to present about Downtown Streets Team along with our program manager, Rachel Davidson, to our mighty West Sacramento Rotary Club this past Friday, and I learned that to date, we have had three, or excuse me, three fully housed Downtown Streets Team members to date, which is fantastic. They were previously unhoused and now have housing, but six have been employed, mostly at Rayleigh's, so thank you to Rayleigh's for giving people the opportunity, but also Dollar Tree has been a fantastic partner in giving folks this opportunity just to do, to hone in their skills and find a way out of their homelessness. I also wanted to report that as of, they, we do a monthly report, we receive them, and in February, 748 40-gallon bags were filled, so it was about 29,920 gallons of rubbish and trash taken from the streets of West Sacramento. So if you go down West Capitol Avenue, many have said, even our senior lead officers over on West Capitol Avenue said that West Cap has never looked so good, because we're working in partnership with not only our police department but our parks department. These, the debris removal also includes sharps, so needles, our team has been trained to pick up the needles, and so that's one, well, in this case, 163 in February, but 282 in January, since they've been trained. These are needles that are not going to be coming in contact with our residents, our children, or, you know, worse, anybody who could be hurt by them. But 28,880 gallons in January, 282 sharps. We have a waiting list for the Downtown Streets Team, so we weren't able to take any new members in February, but it just goes to show that it's such a popular program, and many people are excited to participate. And finally, last Friday, I was grateful to be invited to participate in the principal for a day for the third year in a row with the Washington Unified School District with the leadership of Superintendent Linda Luna and her staff. I was, for the very first time, at Westfield Village. In previous years, it was Southport and Bridgeway, Roseway Island. This year, at Westfield, under the leadership of Principal Krista Koch. Fantastic experience for the students to engage with people from our city. I saw a lot of stakeholders and community business leaders, people who just wanted to participate in the Read Across America effort, and it makes me so proud to be a West Sacramento, and when I go in there and I see these lovely kids who are so excited to learn and excited to see a city council member and excited to get a bookmark from Dr. Seuss, and anyhow, it's a fantastic program, and I'm grateful for the partnership with Washington Unified and happy that they, they do this for our community every year.
All right, thank you. A couple of reports. I attended the spring leadership of the United States Conference of Mayors in Florida a week and a half ago. This is the twice-annual meeting of the leadership of the Conference of Mayors, and as the council knows, I chair the Jobs Education and Workforce Committee for the mayors of the United States. And there was, we got some good updates on issues like opportunity zones and some of the, the current predictions on where the final rigs are going to land and some of the implications. There's a lot, but there's still a lot swirling of uncertainty around, around the actual impact, and a lot of concern about, you know, just the, because there's no, there's no checkpoints for local governments around how opportunity zones are going to work. You know, I think both in terms of not wanting the federal budget to bust, for simply a giveaway to property developers, but also, you know, even good investments at too large of a magnitude, too fast, can have deleterious impacts on neighborhoods and urban areas that, yes, we want to, we want to make improvements, but we, but we're making improvements for the, you know, for the purpose of improving the quality of life, access to amenities and basic services and infrastructure for the people that live there, which you don't achieve if, if, you know, we'd like to see additional development occur on the Fifth Street corridor in the Washington District or what have you, but I don't think any of us really wants to see $500 million worth of investment in a year in the, in the Washington District. And so those sorts of challenges around how, you know, how we can attract, be very attractive for opportunity zone investments, and at the same time, guide them to the extent that we can, although we have no power in that process, is a challenge that several, you know, several of the, of us at the mayor's conference are trying to figure out how, you know, where are the openings for us to have some impact in, in the guiding part of it in addition to the work that's already been on the, on the investment attraction side of the equation. We're also working on, in conjunction with the National League of Cities and the counties on a coordinated infrastructure strategy. So the White House convened a meeting with our leadership and other, and the other organizations around the infrastructure package that they want to move forward. Councilor called that last year's infrastructure package that came from the White House, we pretty much had zero interest in, because there's no money in it, basically. It was, you know, pretty much, you know, cities and counties and others do public-private partnerships of unspecified form that are going to bring a whole bunch of money to the table, but no federal money, and we're actually going to cut federal money for things that cities want. So that was a non-starter, but it is definitely high on the agenda for both members of Congress and for the administration, and so we're trying to help drive that forward in a way that would actually contribute to solving some of the infrastructure problems that we have in cities across America like ours, both in transportation and flood infrastructure and other domains. And the flood piece is important because a lot of the infrastructure conversations have been just about transportation, and a lot of folks forget that water is, you know, is a very significant part of the national infrastructure for health and safety and everything else, and that cities are the primary, were the primary investors in water, where like 80% of the money spent on water infrastructure in the, in the country is through, is by cities and counties, not by the federal government, but the federal government does have a key, a key role to play. So we're, we're working to try to shape that package in a way that means real investments on the ground and real programs that are going to support the kind of work that are happening in places like, like here. At the same time, I think the, the council's maybe aware that there's a move afoot in Congress to restore earmarking, perhaps under a different name. I think they're, they're now wanting to call it Article One Funding, because Article One's the one, the article of the Constitution that creates Congress, so to imply that the founders always intended earmarking. But for whatever reason, it's not a bad thing for, from a, whatever you think about the issue as a, you know, national policy issue, it's not necessarily a bad thing right now, given the, the influence and the savvy and the skill that our, our senatorial delegation and our, and our Congressman endorsements we have in the appropriations process. So I, I think we would not be disadvantaged necessarily by a process that brought those, brought those projects back, especially on things like, like the flood, like our flood protection piece. So more to come on this piece. There's a lot of ongoing conversations happening, both in the House and the Senate and in with the White House through the mayor's group. We were asked to present as part of a panel on economic mobility and, you know, what cities are and can do to, to deal with inequality in this country and in cities and to remove barriers and create opportunities for, for folks to, you know, jump a social class or make it into or stay in the middle class. So it was a panel with the mayors of Louisville, Dayton, Atlanta, and us, and because we were asked to present on the West Sacramento Home Run, which is now a nationally renowned program that a lot of other cities are looking at as a way to deal comprehensively with, with the opportunity gap that exists for so many, so many of our young people. So that was really positive. There was a separate panel on transportation mobility, which we were not on, but we were heavily featured in because VIA was on that panel, and as, was, as one of the quote-unquote, they're not, a startup that was being featured at the meeting, and their, their, their presentation focused mainly on, I think, I want to say Sydney, Australia, New York City, and West Sacramento, or, oh, it was Berlin, sorry, not, not Sydney, Australia. So it was like Berlin and, and, and just as an aside, all the other mayors from all the other cities, like, could you repeat, did you, did you just misspeak? Was your list like Berlin, New York City, and West Sacramento, California? But it was true, and it was, this happened to be the day after we had the council presentation and Ms. Strand's, you know, excellent report on the performance indicators, so I was able to supplement the VIA presentation, and I tell you, the, the, it stole the show. I mean, there is an enormous amount of interest in what is happening, what we're demonstrating, and like I said, that, you know, like I said that night, most other places are not succeeding with their microtransit pilots, and certainly not across the policy domains in terms of, you know, social isolation for seniors and paid employment for youth and, you know, the sorts of things that, that are not just about getting, you know, giving people, you know, the chance to get from home to a bus stop. That is really attracting a lot of attention in other places. So it was, it was really, you know, heartwarming to see, to see other folks be so excited and interested in something that we're not quite taking for granted yet, but we live here, so we, you know, we know and we see it every single day, but it was really, I was really proud to be a part of that, that work. Then the other major elements that we took up were back, the background check legislation, which the House just passed, and then with the group, the mayors, we've been working pretty extensively on the drinking, on drinking water issues and particularly lead in drinking water and some of the Flint issues that have come forward. They're not so much of an issue in jurisdictions like ours, but some of the regulatory approaches from EPA are of interest to places like us, because both EPA and some of the states have been introducing, as is typical, you know, relatively simplistic kind of one-size-fits-all solutions, like, oh, we have to get all the lead out of everything tomorrow without any indication, like, how will that actually work in a, in a city, and what, you know, what would you be replacing it with? And, you know, is, is lead in this pipe more, is it, is it more of a risk than the paint in the house? And those kinds of questions that, so we dived in pretty deep with, with the public works folks from Detroit and Flint, Michigan, and elsewhere to try to figure out where, how we can make sure that, that our interest in improving the quality of our drinking water is made real by, by focusing on the, on the highest opportunity solutions. So that was, that was that meeting. Then the last report I was, the, this one is for a meeting tomorrow that I won't be at, but at the Secog Transportation Committee is meeting tomorrow, and I probably should be editing this because the CEO of Secog is here, but I'm not going to, because it's a big deal. And it will, the, some of the issues that are, that are emerging are, are issues both of substance and of politics that the whole council should be aware of, because well, we're all, all of us are interacting with members of the Secog Board and other city councils and boards of supervisors and the rest of the region. The essential, the essential question that's up is, how do we program transportation money in the region, and what is the region, right, and what is the relationship between the region and the region's objectives and the local governments? It comes about because last year, we didn't fully program every penny that we had available for transportation projects, and I think I briefed the council on that debate at that time, and so we didn't program, we held back, I think, $60 million from, of programming of transportation money, in part because it wasn't, we didn't know at that point whether or not SB 1 would be repealed or not, so we wanted to be conservative about, about making allocations of funding when there was that much uncertainty about whether the funding would exist. Also because the Greater Sacramento Economic Council and other economic development and economic opportunity groups in the region had said, look, you, the, you know, we ought to be, be, we ought to have the flexibility and the nimbleness to be able to make transportation investments that support our major economic development objectives and opportunities that may come along outside of these cycles. So rather than program 120% of all the money and then not have any money at all for the, you know, for the next couple of years, maybe there ought to be some flexibility in that, in that, in that process. So don't, so please don't program every single, every single dollar of that, and a few other reasons. But so, so there's this amount of money that's, that's been held back. Obviously, SB 1 was not repealed, and so the question now is, how do we proceed to program those funds? And in, in the normal Secog world that has evolved over the last 18 years, you know, we might, you might, you might think that we would, that we would invest those, those funds in the funding programs that we, that already exist that we typically compete in. So we compete in a regional, in a regional, a pot that's for regional projects, you know, some of the larger-scale projects in the region. For example, we won money for the Harbor Boulevard Interchange is, is an example of where we, where we won in that project. There's the money for bike and pedestrian projects and that sort of thing. So it's, so you could invest in the, in the competitive funding programs that already exist, and that's normally how we would allocate funds like this for the most part. There is a move afoot in, in the region to consider a couple of different approaches instead, one of which would be to make allocation, to go back to what was already partially funded or didn't quite get funded in a prior round, and go fund that. And that would be beneficial for you if you had a non-competitive project before, right? So, you know, this is, that's a good, that's a good frame for, for the mediocre jurisdictions who, who have decent projects but are, but are not as competitive. And it sounds good, because you already, you already wrote the application for that, for that project, so that's still fresh in your mind. I still want the money for that thing. And you forget that, if it was us, you might forget, we would be really competitive in a competitive process, but you're thinking, oh, but there's that one that we had before two years ago, that if we could just fund that. So that's one option. And then the, the, another one is to put the money on a formula basis. What that formula would be, who knows exactly. Our friends at Sacramento County think that the formula should be something like per population or what have you, and that's, that's attractive to people like public works directors who like, you know, predictability and math and spreadsheets that tell them how much money they're going to have when. It's not great for us, and what the form, and it's not great for us as a jurisdiction for sure, and if you, if you listen to the county supervisors and city council members from some of the places that are proposing to make these changes, they will specifically cite West Sacramento as the example of a jurisdiction that gets way more money than it should. And based on, if you, if your formula is the Sacramento County approach of based on population, they're right. You know, we get way more money than we would get if you just divided up the money by people, because we are not investing in the, we're not investing in the rear-view mirror transfer, transportation system. The transportation investments we make today with today's money are supposed to be for the purpose of dealing with the growth, the, you know, if we're going to add a million people to the region, what do we build? Well, where are the million people going? For example, in this county, they're almost all coming here. They're not going to Davis, so, but, but Davis is bigger than us today. So if you allocate transportation money based on population, you would send way more money to Davis than to West Sacramento, even though something like between us, you know, it's like an 80/20 split, maybe 90/10 of the future people are coming here and not there. So you wouldn't pick that as a formula, but of course, the largest jurisdiction in the region might benefit from that. So that's one, there's no formula that is, that is immaculate, all right, so that one's a horrible one, but there's no, there's not, there's not one that's great either. The other problem with the formula approach and the let's fund the mediocre project approach is that in terms of achieving our actual objectives, which is, you know, reduce emissions, reduce air pollution, reduce asthma, reduce, reduce time in cars, reduce the, you know, the, our contribution to climate change emissions, all those things that are reduced by moving to formulas where, where it's just, yeah, everybody's entitled to money and it doesn't, there's no competition. The competition for achieving these objectives are why we've performed well, because we've proposed projects that do those things, that, that, that make a better place, both in our own city and in the region. The final challenge is if you're, if you're a Galt or a Winters and you get $5 a year in a formula, you have to wait a long time till you're going to be able to build a bridge over Poota Creek or do anything significant. If you're us, forget about ever building an Enterprise Bridge or, you know, any of the other major projects that are in the city, because we wouldn't, under a formula system of any kind, that, you know, large, those kind of large projects for small jurisdictions would be virtually impossible to achieve. And it just isn't, for most jurisdictions that don't have Aaron Laurel as their city manager, and they're not going to find a financing mechanism just to, to save money for 25 years to build that Poota Creek Bridge. So it's really problematic, but from a, I described it in the technical reasons, but it is fundamentally political, I mean, just to put the cards on the table, it's fundamentally political about moving money from some places in the region to others, and it is fundamentally political in the sense of we should, you know, we should not, it shouldn't be performance-based. It shouldn't be about achieving these, these important objectives, and, you know, it ought to be about my project and my jurisdiction. And so this is, this, this, this discussion, this conversation that we have to have in the whole region, and this is, you know, this is a vibrant regional democracy, starts tomorrow. So this is, I'm not, I'm raising this tonight just to, because it's important that all of us be knowledgeable and engaged in it, but not as a, not as a red flag, just as an invitation to have conversations with colleagues in other, in other jurisdictions and, and to learn, dive deeper into it and, and learn more, so. Because we have a lot at stake in this one, obviously, both as a city but also, you know, as a, as a region and as a planet, so. All right, sorry for the long report. We don't have any board, board and commission appointments this evening, so we're going to move to the consent agenda, which is items two and three. Are there any questions or separate, or any items to remove?
Item two, please.
Any others? All right, then, item two is consideration of approval of a contract with Jacobs for a water a water quality recreation and ecosystem enhancements and analysis associated with the proposed Central Park. Councilmember Guerrero.
Hi, Katie. Thank you so much. I just wanted to, first of all, comment on the work you've done over a period of time obtaining the commission recommendation and just recognize that Wes Eka is also supportive of the recommendation that I think you have here in this report. And in reading what the Jacobs contract looks like, it's something that I'm very supportive of, wanting to do a little more of a study of what's going on with the water and, and the habitat that's in there. So just appreciate the work that's being done. And also spend some time with staff to go over the GRR solution and the recommendations that are being provided. It's something I'd like to learn more about as we move forward.
Okay. We'll, we'll make that happen. Thank you.
All right. There's no further questions or comments on consent? Is there a motion?
It's moved. Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Potem Roscoe, seconded by Councilmember Guerrero. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Item four is consideration of resolution 19-14, supporting the Sacramento Area Council of Governments Green Means Go pilot program. And since I've already ruined Mr. Corliss's evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council.
There we go. Is the mic on?
Yeah.
Chris Doherty with the Public Works Department. The item for you this evening is the consideration of resolution 19-14 in support of Secog's pilot project, Green Means Go. Staff is recommending that the councils adopt this resolution supporting the pilot project that really seeks to promote infill development, transportation investments and the electrification of mobility. Here to provide more information about the pilot project is James Corliss, the executive director of Secog.
Thank you, Mayor Cabaldin, members of the council. Real pleasure to be here. Yes, mayor's taken many of my talking points already, but I think you all know, and, and mayor, you've made reference to it several times already, the region, the sixth county Sacramento region has a very, very stiff greenhouse gas reduction target to achieve from the state of California. It's a 19% per capita reduction from transportation sources by 2035. That's a three percentage point shift from 16% last, our last transportation plan to 19%. We wanted to be the region that says we can and we have big dreams, but we also told the state of California, the A-R-B, A-Resources Board, we need serious help if we're going to achieve that target. Actually, the ARB acknowledged that and said, actually, yes, this region is different. You're not the same as the Bay Area and LA and San Diego, which have the same targets that we have. And so the state of California should help the region. They then tasked us with coming up with a program to actually figure out how we can achieve our target. Last six months, we've been working with your staff. We've been convening economic development directors, for-profit, nonprofit housing developers, and many others in the public and private sector. And we have developed this program that's in front of you tonight for, for your resolution. We're calling it Green Means Go because not just we want to achieve our environmental goals, but we want to accelerate, accelerate infill development, microtransit, and deployment of zero emission electric vehicles. And we want the state of California to help us do that. And we want to be the testbed. We want to be the place that we actually try and test models that will work not just for this region, for the Central Valley, and for mid-sized cities and regions all across the United States. So it is indeed a tall order. We are working in the legislature. This is a budget request. We are, we are looking at 100 million a year for four years, so $400 million. It's a big ask, but the state said, you tell us what you need, and we believe at least for a demonstration project and program, this is what we need. Kudos to your staff for putting the resolution together, but also identifying what we're calling a green zone, which is where we want to accelerate these kinds of innovations. Again, really three buckets. It's the infill development, it's microtransit, and it's zero emission vehicles. Really just appreciate your involvement. Again, we think there's a lot of possibility here, of course, in the city of West Sacramento. So appreciate your support. There is what we're calling a pre-application due next Friday, March 15th. That is to show the legislature that we are indeed serious as a region. We expect at least a majority of our jurisdictions, if not about two-thirds, to be participating. So it is our opportunity and our moment to show the legislature that we're serious, that we work together as a region, that we have big hopes, and that we need to partner with them to achieve those goals. Happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Guerrero.
Yes. Thank you very much for being here tonight.
Sure.
For your presentation. Definitely would like to make sure that we have a commitment with you to have this happen. And what could we do to demonstrate? Could we write a letter of support in the legislature? What can we do to demonstrate that aside from the approval tonight?
Love that question. Absolutely. We would love to get your help. We, we would love to get your, your support to the delegation, to our regional delegation here to make sure that they are supportive in the legislature. Again, this is a budget request, so we also assume there'll probably be a budget hearing sometime around April. So whatever we can do to get you on record, to get you supportive, to get your delegation to understand how important this is to, to West Sacramento would be fantastic if you can come to the budget hearing when it's scheduled. That would be great.
Thank you. And are there any details on the budget, on the trailer bill language, or is there any trailer bill language for that?
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet.
And we can make sure we have Aaron involved in that process.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sandin.
Yeah, thank, thank you for being here this evening. I was able to attend the Metropolitan Transportation Plan Sustainable Community Strategy briefing for Yolo County elected officials, and we were, we heard about this there. We were given kind of a preview and some background. And I, I know it's just the one person, it's a 1% reduction of the 19 to 18, but the, the programs and the possibilities are just enormous, I think, for us. And I, I think, as you mentioned, we're positioned very well to be successful in this. So again, I, I think by passing the resolution tonight of support and move it being kind of participating, I, I, I think we can do this, and I'm, I'm really hopeful.
And Councilmember Sandin, I do want to be clear, there is no promise, right? This is, we're actually, we're calling it a pre-application because we want to show the legislature that our region, first of all, we want to show where the region is on the map, literally, you know, it's right here. This is where Marysville is, this is where West, West Sacramento is. But we want to show them we're serious. It's a, it's a big, bold ask, and, and there's a, it's a high-risk strategy. But frankly, as I sit in my office and look across the state capitol, I don't think we are really throwing our weight around as we should as a region. We actually met with the governor's staff yesterday in terms of some of his ideas on housing. I think those are still in formation. And what we said to them is, please don't initially just come right out the gate with a punitive measure in terms of we're going to take away your funding if you don't hit your arena targets. Rather, have a challenge, have a race to the top, ask the jurisdictions what is possible and reward them. And this is this approach with Green Means Go. So I'm hoping, not only will we get this funded, but we'll actually hopefully get the governor and his staff to listen to this as sort of a model about how we work with local government.
Councilmember Ledesma.
Thank you, and, and good to see you, and thank you for being here tonight. 100% supportive of this, but more so just in what you just said, in the, in the, the leadership you're showing to the region to galvanize us, because it has been concerning to me to see some of the punitive steps for good reasons around housing issues around the state. But this is an opportunity for us to really shoot, like you said, race to the top in a, in a good way. So appreciate your leadership on this, and thanks to staff for supporting you and getting this established. This is, the, the green zone that we're proposing is absolutely one, I think, that is ripe for this sort of, we've partnered with you already on a few projects here, so 100% are supportive. And yeah, if we can get Aaron's staff involved in any legislation or support, supportive letters, happy to do it. So, thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree, obviously. I've been part of the cheerleading section for the, for James at Secog on, on this work. I mean, just to, I, you cannot put enough lines underneath this or exclamation points at the end. The 19%, 18% is, is a stretch. And we've actually been, we've struggled to even meet the targets that we have, that we had been assigned before and that we had agreed to before and that we were, optimistic may not be the right word, but we, you know, we felt like we, there was, we had a good shot at meeting our, the targets that we had before. And we, we've, we're losing some ground in that space. And it's, so it's important, I think, to recognize just how big of a challenge this is, and both for the importance of this, of this initiative, but also, you know, the issue I was just talking about. If we're not, if we're not deploying every penny that we have in the region for things that are going to hit this, the 19%, we're, we're just asking for trouble. And we're, we're not going to get the $100 million if, at the same moment that we're asking the legislature to more than double down to make this extraordinary investment in what we're doing in this region, if we are not deploying our own money in just a strategic and focused and, you know, way. So I think it's really important because if we don't, you know, if we don't hit this, you know, the jurisdictions, you know, we, the whole region loses if we don't, if we don't meet that 19% on a whole, on a whole host of reasons, including and especially us. So, so I think this is, this is a really important initiative, and this is a council with lots and lots and lots of background and governmental relations in various capacities. So I think we'll be, we'll be ready to, to help. If I, if I, Chris, I don't know if you, if you're that familiar with our map, James, but I wanted to ask about our green zone. So the elements here are infill development, zero emission vehicles, and microtransit. What's the, the, what's, how's this zone the zone? And maybe, as one particular question I had is, you know, it's kind of when, when you get into the, into Southport, you, you, we, we sketch around a part, one neighborhood in Southport. We have a bunch of other neighborhoods in which infill development, as an example, we are not, we are, we are actively not doing. But what is, you know, since, because it's those three things which are very different in, well, at least two of them, you know, infill development is very different from micro, microtransit and zero emission vehicles. What's the, what's the thinking behind this particular zone?
Sure. Happy to answer that. The thinking to the areas to the south was pretty much to encapsulate some areas of new development in there. That's why it kind of goes around to those, those vacant areas. The areas generally in the north area really mirror our low VMT modeled areas from Secog's analysis and areas that are probably the most primarily transit-supported or have a lot of opportunity for active transportation projects for, for, for modal choice. So that's what the north area was, was really kind of focusing on through, up to the northern part of the city.
Okay. So we're, when we said infill, microtransit, and ZEVs, were those just examples of, of dozens of things or, because you were talking about active transportation, which doesn't necessarily, doesn't obviously fit in those three categories? I don't understand.
And, and mayor, I probably shorthanded microtransit because that's what I'm excited about. I'm excited about your VIA experiment, but it really is transit options, which includes bike and pad. And I, Chris, I'll do this in real time, but I'd imagine maybe this is a lot of the infill pieces, but I don't, I don't know that for sure in terms of what you've mapped here. And these are, these are draft, right? You're doing a pre-application. I wouldn't get too hung up on the, whenever we show a map, I know you're going to have lots of questions. But in particular, I think we would want to know not just sort of the location of potential infill in particular, right? But how might we get, what are the sparks to make that actually happen, right? What are the, what are the mechanisms by which, if you had financial incentives, that would provide that incentive to actually get the development to go?
Yeah. The only reason I'm getting hung up on it is typically if we're adopting a map of some kind, it will have gone to two commissions and we'll have seen it twice here, whatever. So this is just like an attachment on the thing. And so if it, if it is infill development, then typically when we, when we draw where, you know, we're doing things that have infill and development incentives, we draw out existing neighborhoods where we don't want to encourage any, any, any change in form. So the, the state streets or, or, you know, the historic parts of Bright or whatever, the neighborhood neighborhoods, we draw out. But since, since this isn't just infill development, I understood why it wasn't there, but it just makes it complicated and figure out, okay, what, but then what is the rationale, you know, for it stopping here or going into, you know, it includes a whole new development area that's, whether stone lock is, I guess it's infill, but kind of. And yet doesn't get over, if, you know, if you build on the other side of Sycamore on West Capitol Avenue, according to the West Capitol Action Plan, which is on a transit corridor, that's not here, right? So that, that, I, I would like to know more, recognize that we can change it, but I'd like to know more so that we could change it potentially when we spend more time on, on what it actually means, because it's not really clear to me. And I understand it's a Frankenstein zone, given that those are not really related, infill versus ZEVs and, and transit, transit options. But I think, you know, we, if it's going to mean something, we should, we should buy into it, so.
We're happy to take a closer look at that and bring it back to you for adoption at a later date.
Take it to the commissioners, the transportation commission.
Great. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Roscoe, seconded by Councilmember, uh, Mayor Potem Roscoe, and seconded by Councilmember Sandin. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Mr. Corliss, thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
All right. Item five is consideration of resolution 19-5, adopting the final initial study of mitigated negative declaration under the California Environmental Quality Act for the Corporation Yard relocation project and approving the purchase of the 4300 West Capitol Avenue property from the Sacramento-Yolo Port District for the project. Mr. Toft.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. The city has been actively planning the, for the relocation of its Corp yard facility in Pioneer Bluff since council approval of the Pioneer Bluff Transition Plan in 2014. And securing the relocation property has been a collaborative effort between the port and the city. So the 4300 West Capitol Avenue property was acquired by the port in 2015 for relocation of the Corporation Yard, but also for the port's own, own objectives, including paying off an existing $1.2 million loan from the city and accelerating deindustrialization of Pioneer Bluff, thereby adding value to the, the port's stone lock property. So since 2016, the city has approved design funding for the Corp yard project and $8.3 million in construction funding, coming from $5 million from the 2017 water and sewer master plans, and $2.3 million from the sale of the Ramco Street property in Southport Industrial Park. A phase one project has been scoped based on this construction budget, and it's ready to bid out later this month. So the time is really now to transfer the property from the, from the port to the city. Fair market value for the site was established by appraisal at $3,385,000, and staff has developed a no cash transaction to preserve construction capital for the, for the project. And so the funding, the acquisition funding would come from the $1.2 million loan that I mentioned, crediting that towards the purchase price, leaving a balance of $2.2 million, which the port would carry in a promissory note and secured by the value of the existing Corp yard property in Pioneer Bluff. So with that, I'll conclude. I'll note that the Port Commission considered and approved this same item tonight. The council's recommended action includes adopting the, the SEQA analysis for the entire Corp yard project. We have a pretty deep bench on this. The staff team is here tonight. If you have any in the weeds questions about the project or SEQA. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Toft. Any questions or staff? Any comments? All right. And the port, the, three members of the council are on the, on the, on the Port Commission heard this, the bulk of the item earlier, and I believe other members of the council who may have been in the audience, so they've heard the whole presentation. All right, then is there?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Second.
Been moved by Mayor Potem Roscoe, seconded by Councilmember Guerrero. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Council of Calendar, Ms. Rowland.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Couple of events that are coming up in the near future. Next Tuesday, March, I'm sorry, in a couple of weeks, March, on March 19th, Tuesday, we have the ribbon cutting for the Grand Gateway Washington District Infrastructure Project. Not that 10:00 AM. And then on Saturday, March 23rd, we have the I Street Bridge Lantern Festival, and that's from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. And that's it. And that's it.
Any questions on the calendar? City manager report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one item, some late-breaking good news. We just got informed that we received a grant of about $150,000 from the California Student Aid Commission, from the Every Kids Account Program. This is for the college savings account portion of the Home Run Program. It'll be used for... To do marketing and outreach to families who are eligible for the program. So, want to commend Justine Jimenez and Jeff Miller, our Home Run team, and Amanda also for that. And one other item, just so I know, there's a few councilmembers that are interested in this, on the EIFD topic. So, there was an assembly hearing, a budget informational hearing on housing homelessness that covered the same topic, but this is related to the elimination of the bond vote threshold. So, we're still tracking that. There's a committee hearing, Senate Governance Finance, coming up on March 20th that I'm planning to attend.